Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, August 21st, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. At 7:30, I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, please call a roll.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Anquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. Uh, we have a quorum. On to Agenda Item 2. Recede of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anyone in the public audience who has any written communication they wish to submit? If so, please raise your hand if you have any written communication. Okay? Please come on up and hand whatever you have to Clerk Sp-- oh, do we have two? I'm sorry, I missed a gentleman in the back, too. Please come on up and just hand whatever you have to Clerk Spencer. Oh, three, wonderful!
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Pardon?
Uh, I haven't seen it, so...
I didn't see it. Did you see it?
I've been at-- oh, I wasn't here.
I only saw it today.
Okay, well, we'll make sure...
Okay, anyone else with written communications for the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for other folks that might want to speak this evening, and also out of respect for the work that we have to get done here. Uh, we have a sign-up sheet in the back of the room. When we call your name, I ask that you approach the microphone over there to my right, Chief Ruth's left. Please identify yourself as we are recording. Please identify yourself by name. Address is optional. And, uh, we will be timing you if you go over your three minutes. We will give you a gentle nudge and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I'll start with Nick Perisi.
Uh, Nick Perisi, Elmhurst resident. I sent an email last Wednesday morning, August 16th, around 9:45 a.m., uh, to City Manager Grabowski, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Norm Leader, my alderman, Alderman Michael Brahm, and I included David Moyer from our school district after the O'Hare Fly Quiet rotation sent airplanes over my house. The first one was sent at 3:15, 18 a.m. at 1,600 feet. Typically, they're all about that many feet above my house. Uh, then it was 3:38, 3:59, 4:01, 4:02, 4:04, 4:08, 4:10, 4:16, 4:18, 4:22, 4:38, 4:39, 4:41, 4:44, 4:46, 4:49, 5, 5:04, 5:08, 5:10, 5:12, 5:13, and then the pattern shifted west to east. Twenty-three in total over a two-hour span. Fourteen landings in the four o'clock hour, or about one landing every four minutes. Only one alderman responded to my email. Not surprisingly, it was Alderman Brahm. Unfortunately, he did not have any answers. He is the only elected or appointed official that I see who is engaged with trying to find a solution to the runway rotation testing. It just so happened last Wednesday morning that the City of Chicago 311 website was not accepting complaints. Don't forget, this is one of the only ways Elmhurst residents can express its displeasure in airplane noise. While this is the first time I experienced issues submitting a complaint online, I have heard from other residents that they have had problems, too. So my first question that I asked in the email was, "Is there anything we can do or anyone we can notify that the website is not accepting complaints?" I received no response. My second question was, "What is the plan for the Public Safety and Affairs Committee once the Fly Quiet resolution is signed? Just sitting back and waiting for the results of Test 3 surveys is not acceptable." I received no response. Third question was, "What is the status of our school board addition to the ONCC?" I received no response. There was discussion at the August 14th Public Affairs and Safety Committee meeting about engaging David Moyer in the school district five weeks ago. Next question was, "Are there any legal remedies available to the City of Elmhurst?" Received no response. Next question was, "Has there been any discussions about potential lawsuits in regards to the politically motivated Fly Quiet Rotation Test Program?" I received no response. Last question, "The city is spending 24 and 1/2 million in construction costs from 2015 to 2018 to complete nine stormwater projects for 230 homes. How much is the city spending to protect its thousands of residents, hundreds of homeowners, from airplane traffic, noise pollution, safety, air pollution, gas emissions, fluid emissions, health, property values, and quality of life?" I received no response. I asked before you today, "Is there a different or better way to communicate with you? Please let me know, because otherwise, based upon your lack of response, I get the impression that you don't give a darn. As a taxpayer and for all taxpayers, I deserve a response." Thank you.
Anna Marie Gustiffen.
Good evening, my name is Anna Marie Gustiffen. My husband Grant and I have lived in Elmhurst since 2012 with our three girls. Our oldest daughter is eight years old, and she just started third grade. Last week on Wednesday morning, the first day of school, she came downstairs with dark circles in her eyes, excited but completely exhausted and sleep deprived. She told me that the airplanes kept waking her up all night long. She said that she felt like she had been awake forever that morning, listening to planes land and take off since around 3:00 a.m. on her alarm clock. With the brand-new windows on our house closed, fans running, and white noise, she could not sleep through the low-flying planes. I told my daughter that I was sorry, that I was just starting to learn more information about how our fellow community members are trying to bring awareness to this issue and working to create a resolution to ensure that this does not become permanent. And then she said to me, "Mom, I remember meeting the mayor one time outside of Starbucks. Maybe we can ask him for help." So here I am, I'm asking for your help. Mostly the information that I have gathered regarding the Fly Quiet Rotation Test has been through social media. Last Thursday was the very first time I had seen information put forth by an alderman posting a review of Phase 2 that indicated low usage of Runway 4R 22L and low complaints. This was incredibly surprising news to me. This rotation testing has greatly impacted the health and quality of life of my family and countless others. This is not normal airplane traffic. There are residents of Elmhurst who had no idea this testing was even occurring, and some people have been quick to dismiss our complaints if they have not personally experienced disruptive, low-flying planes overhead from 10:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m. every night, every other week. However, more residents of our city are becoming aware of this particular testing phase, and more concern is being expressed, not just for those directly affected, but for the community of Elmhurst as a whole. I was very distressed to learn that the ONCC is considering continuing this pattern of flight path, Phase 3, from spring of 2018 through November of 2020. I'm asking our elected officials to act on our behalf as quickly as possible before this happens, and I'm asking for a clearer agenda and better communication moving forward. Please help us pass this resolution. My girls are well aware of what their mom is here for tonight. I am speaking on their behalf. Our family chose to live in Elmhurst because of the sense of community here. I am always struck by how so many of our friends and neighbors grew up here in Elmhurst, went to York High School, went off to college, and then moved back home to Elmhurst to raise their families. And I can only hope that my daughters will have the same experience and feelings about their city when they are older. Thank you.
Carol Snyder.
Yes, good evening, my name's Carol Snyder. I'm an Elmhurst resident. The O'Hare Fly Quiet Rotation Test #3 cannot be allowed to stand. While I believe that it is reasonable to share in the pain while the completion-- while we await the completion of O'Hare's multi-billion-dollar, six-parallel runway expansion plan, Test #3 goes beyond the limits of what is an acceptable redistribution of air traffic. Tests #1 and #2 were tolerable. Test #3 is not. Test 3 subjects Elmhurst to primary air traffic patterns during nighttime Fly Quiet hours for six weeks out of 12. By contrast, Tests 1 and 2, Elmhurst saw three weeks out of 12 during Fly Quiet hours. That's a 200% increase. Looking more closely at the distribution of arrivals and departures across various runways, it becomes apparent just how far beyond acceptable Rotation #3 actually is. There are five runways in rotation during Test 3. Only one of them impacts Elmhurst. Yet we are subject to four weeks of primary arrivals, while communities east and northeast of O'Hare are only subject to two weeks of primary arrivals during that same 12-week period. The impact of arrivals is far worse than that of departures because the flight path of arrivals must remain fairly fixed over a residential swath of Elmhurst. Fly Quiet Test 3 subjects Elmhurst to four weeks of arrivals out of 12, whereas Test 2 subjected us to only one week out of 12. Therefore, Test 3 represents a 400% increase over Test 2 in this regard. The O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, which recommends Fly Quiet Rotation patterns to the FAA, has referred to Test 3 as an improvement over Tests 1 and 2, but that is certainly not the case for our community. The numbers speak for themselves. I'd like to thank Elmhurst City officials for their efforts thus far in representing the best interests of Elmhurst in relationship to those of other affected communities. I am here to further ask that you formally oppose Fly Quiet Rotation Test 3 and take action on behalf of all of the residents of Elmhurst. I am also here to ask you, my fellow community members, to stand together with your neighbors and help protect our quality of life, our property values, and the health and welfare of our community by taking five minutes of your time to complete the Fly Quiet Test 3 survey. You can find it by Googling "Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Test 3 Survey," or you can find it on the City of Elmhurst website. Please take particular note of Question 21 and say no to making Rotation Test 3 the air traffic pattern of choice throughout the foreseeable future. Also, for those directly affected by this inequitable redistribution of Fly Quiet air traffic, please continue to file your complaints online at ChicagoNoiseComplaint.com, and should that website not be working, as it frequently is not, please call the hotline at 1-800-435-9569. Thank you.
Shelley Legear.
Hi, thank you. My name is Shelley Legear. I live at 449 East Webster Avenue. I spoke probably two weeks ago today on behalf of my daughter Annie Legear. This Saturday, August 26th, 2017, will be the second-year anniversary of my daughter's death. My daughter Annie died from complications secondary to anaphylaxis reaction to an unknown allergen. Since then, we've developed the Annie Legear Foundation on October 3rd, 2015. I went to Springfield with Chris Nybo. We proposed a bill for the Annie Legear Law, which enabled first responders, being police officers, to carry and administer epinephrine. 2005, I mean, August 5th, 2016, Governor Rauner signed that law. It is now the 21st of August, and Elmhurst Police Department still does not carry up Epi auto-injectors. I understand that there's a lot of reasons why, but I am very excited to say that I found-- or a doctor came to me and said that she would be willing to sign the prescription for epinephrine for the first responders to carry epinephrine that can in fact save a child, an adult, a senior citizen, or anyone going through anaphylaxis. Epinephrine sometimes is seen as a medication that can be quite frightening. Epinephrine saves lives. That's all it does. Our body is filled with epinephrine. It's called adrenaline. Epinephrine is used for respiratory distress, respiratory failure, anaphylaxis, and cardiac arrest. I have so many people here to support me tonight. So many of them are Annie's classmates. Some of them were there that night that Annie went through her distress, and they no longer have her friend, my daughter, granddaughter, friend, niece with them today. So it's with great honor, I want to introduce to you Dr. Gracy, who can explain a little bit more about epinephrine and how it can save lives. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, I'm Therese Gracy. I'm a board-certified pediatrician with Elmhurst Clinic. I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience. I'm also an Elmhurst resident. I live with-- here with my husband and five children. And just to kind of piggyback off what Mrs. Legear was saying, epinephrine absolutely saves lives. It is the standard of care in all instances. If someone is even at risk of having a life-threatening allergic reaction, I know my patients, they know my mantra, "When in doubt, you give the Epi." Don't even hesitate, because epinephrine is what's going to save your life. During a life-threatening allergic reaction, essentially through a variety of processes in the body, you lose your blood pressure, is really the underlying pathology. And epinephrine is the only thing that can constrict your blood vessels, to raise your blood pressure, to give you enough time to get to an emergency room. Most allergic reactions do not happen in a medical facility. There are no medical people around. It happens on the streets, it happens in restaurants, it happens in your house. And epinephrine is the only thing that could save a life. I would urge you, in the interest of time, I would urge you to educate yourself about the side effects of epinephrine, and I think what you'll find is that given in the intramuscular route, which is how the auto-injectors are delivered, that seriously decreases the risk of any serious side effects due to epinephrine. An IV dose of epinephrine absolutely can have side effects, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about an intramuscular injection of epinephrine. And one thing that I would point out, I know that first responders commonly carry Narcan that's administered for people who have overdosed on heroin. That, too, can have life-threatening side effects, cardiac arrhythmias, seizures, things like that. So if we're going to allow our first responders to carry Narcan, I think it is a absolute no-brainer that our first responders carry epinephrine. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Beth Plummer.
That's okay. I talked to Ms. Legear and her folks before. No, that's fine, young lady, you can speak, there's no question about it. Um, I don't want to break this group up, so what I'm going to ask is, I know the next person on the list is Ms. Plummer, but I'm going to ask that if anybody who wants to speak on behalf of Ms. Legear and the work that she's doing, please just, you know, take-- feel free to take turns until your group is finished, um, with the same, you know, restrictions that we mentioned. I will say, Ms. Plummer, before you get started, and it looks like it's already happening, I want Dr. Gracy to talk to Chief Ruth, because he's the one that will get you in touch with Deputy Chief McLean, who is our lead in Police Department on this. So, it sounds like you're already exchanging information. Enough of interruption of the meeting, Ms. Plummer?
Hi, my name is Beth Plummer, and I am in the 1st Ward, and I am also a member of the Annie Legear Foundation. I have worked with Shelley and many of the people in this room over the last two years to get this done. I have been at every meeting with Shelley. Sometimes I've had to drive her because it's so painful to her, but we've done it, and I am so proud of her. We came last time because Shelley wanted to know why, um, they weren't carrying Epi pens, the first responders. And while we sat and waited, we listened to awards being given, the Elmhurst Memorial Presentation of Run-of-the-Month Award for an Outstanding EMS Service Call, and it was awesome. It was about a gentleman who was having a heart attack, and the first responders, the paramedics, Elmhurst Hospital, um, off-duty firemen all worked together to save this gentleman, and he spoke at the meeting, and it was awesome. But also, a little bit of me died listening to that, because Annie didn't get her perfect run. And there's nothing we can do about it now but move on, as we're doing, and get the Epi pens in the police cars so that we can have the perfect run for anyone else this happens to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this subject?
Hi, I'm Katherine Hansen, I-10 York, and I'm an Elmhurst resident. I was Annie's, like, one of Annie's best friends, and I was there the night the incident occurred. I was, we were 8th graders, like, just having a fun time, enjoying the rest of our summer, and August 19th, at 12:30 a.m., Annie was going into anaphylactic shock. I've never seen anything like this in my life, and as kids, we didn't know what to do. We did not know it was, like, she was having an allergic reaction. We really didn't know. And I think it's important that we educate the people of our community on how, what Epi pens are, what they're used for, and the benefits that they have, because they could have, one Epi pen could have saved my best friend Annie. And I think one thing that we should do is have every, like, gym class or one class for each student in the Elmhurst community to learn how to use an Epi pen. It's so simple, and it's so easy, and to have people come in and speak, and us, the junior board, would be more than welcome to do so, and have certified people to come with us. We would love that. And I'm also on the junior board for the foundation, and it's just a great honor of mine to be able to do this, and be able to do, like, amazing things for my best friend, who I miss dearly every single day. This is not something a kid should have to go through. I'm very involved in my community, very involved in my school, and it's the easy-- like, the things that keep me motivated in Annie. Like, my Annie's in me, and she keeps me motivated every single day at school and everything, but it would honestly be much easier if she was here by my side, and that is why we've gone through all these obstacles with you guys and the community, and to get these Epi pens with these police officers, and I think it's about time. We have the prescription, it's about time we get this done, so this does not happen again, because it shouldn't have happened in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to address the council on this matter? If not, I'm going to ask Clerk Spencer to go back to the list in order that folks signed up. Clerk Spencer?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Jim Jensen.
Hi, Jim Jensen, Elmhurst resident. Just want to add back to the O'Hare air noise. Everybody else tonight said things great, so I'll just add a couple more words. My family and I moved to Elmhurst last summer. When we made the decision to move here, we knew there was going to be some airplane noise. We're not that far from airport, but we talked to a lot of people ahead of time, and they said, "Oh, it's not that bad. It's much better than it used to be." And, um, so we decided to move here and deal with a little bit of noise. Since moving here, we've now listened to many of our neighbors complain about the air noise, how much worse it is, and we've witnessed it ourselves. We can tolerate a fair amount of noise, but especially with this latest rotation, we're experiencing much more noise, especially overnight. In addition to the normal irritation of the noise, we have concerns for our children. You know, with them in Emerson, over at York, it's starting to impact their sleep, and we're worried that it's going to impact them getting a good night's sleep, being ready for school, and getting a good education. So at this point, I'm a little disappointed that I've only heard about this through my neighbors. I haven't really heard anything from the city about this, so I'd like to see the city get a little bit more involved, help educate the rest of the people in Elmhurst, and take a more proactive approach to try to help alleviate the noise issue. Thank you.
Barbara Lonergan.
Barbara Lonergan, resident of Elmhurst. The paperwork that I turned in is documentation of air traffic for two of the most heavily trafficked nights this week, this past week, for the Fly Quiet Runway Rotation. We have four more weeks of impact through October 15th, with the potential to receive this type of traffic every other week through November 2020. I think Mr. Perisi was generous with his, the times that he detailed, because on Wednesday, August 16th, I started hearing traffic at 12:30, and it went through 5:13 a.m. There were 30 planes during that time. On Saturday, August 19th, between the hours of 12:14 and 5:26 a.m., there were 32 planes. A majority of those hit between 3:50 and 5:26 a.m. So I half-jokingly ask you to set your alarms for those times. I've detailed them in the paperwork that Ms. Spencer has, and let me know if your quality of life is affected by those disruptions. Residents are very clear that the City of Elmhurst is not just waking up to Fly Quiet, that the city has been reporting on this for years. Please know that this is not the same Fly Quiet traffic that we've been experienced in the past. This runway rotation is above and beyond what we've experienced. This is above and beyond what the FAA told us here in City Hall in September of 2015, which was that we'd experience less and less traffic and noise from the diagonal runway. As recently as August 7th, a Chicago Department of Aviation spokesman was quoted in the Daily Herald as saying, "Runway 4R 22L will remain important to O'Hare's airfield in the rare instances when strong crosswinds prevent air traffic from operating in an east or west configuration." On behalf of residents, please question the CDA as to when the 4R 22L runway will begin to be used in rare instances. Five of the planes on August 16th were cargo planes. Two were DC-10s, one was a B-752, and two were A-306s. There is a JDA Aviation Technology Solutions document that states, "Although Runway 4R 22L is often available, these run, this runway is short, 7,500 feet, and often not long enough for a wide-body cargo traffic that is common overnight." On behalf of residents, I ask you to please clarify if these cargo planes should be using the diagonal runway. We have no information as when the final decision on future runway rotations will be made. Decision-makers bypassed evaluating the data for Test 2 before they moved into Test 3. There's no guarantee that Test 3 data will be evaluated before its final decision is made on runway rotations. Clarification on a decision date is appreciated, as we only have eight weeks left in this rotation. Additionally, it would be helpful to know how much weight complaints and surveys carry in the decision-making process. We have numerous questions for the FAA, the CDA, and the ONCC. The Public Affairs and Safety Committee said that they would work to get an FAA representative to a meeting, and we'd appreciate the opportunity to pose these and many other questions in the near future. Finally, the resolution in opposition of Fly Quiet Runway Rotation is a step in the right direction, but it is clear from last week's committee meeting that the city has no plan in place once the resolution is signed. We cannot wait to, just prior to the vote, to read the resolution to the ONCC. With just eight weeks left in Test 3, we urge the city to develop a plan and fight this runway rotation on behalf of its residents. Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pogash, 566 West Gladys. Thank you for all coming. It's unusual. Ah, yes. I'm appreciative of the fact that the city has taken a stand on giving commercial properties a portion of our sales tax. Really does a great deal for the residents. This town started out with TIFs, and if people in this room and councilmen want to read the Tribune article, Tribune article about TIFs, maybe they won't be so happy about But we gave away another $500,000 last meeting. That puts it about $4 million in sales taxes given away. Mayor was kind enough to say the state's going to start cutting money to the city. Looked at finance and said, well, you're going to have to come up with the money. Well, how's finance going to come up with $4 million? Commercial entities in this town walk up to this town and say, we want money. We got a remodel. $500,000 here, $85,000 there, and you guys don't hesitate. See these people here? They're the residents of this town. How about if they come up to development and planning and say they'd like a $10,000 to remodel their home? What would you tell them? That is the reality. They got a problem with planes, but not too long, this council is going to vote on a new budget for this city. And there's a lot of money that's missing. $18 million in general obligation bonds are added to my, whoa, $5 million are supposedly for water meters. $13 million goes somewhere. We spent, for the number of years I've come here, endless money on the treatment plant. And now we, in theory, because that's the way the bonds were sold, we're spending $13 And that's the burden of the residents, plus the other hundred-and-so-million dollars worth of general obligation bonds. They may be worried about planes, and they've flown over my backyard. But the loss of money that's given away because potentially it'll increase the sales tax returned to the city is like going into a casino.
Mr. Pogash, I have your three minutes, then I ask you to wrap up, please.
You don't go in the casino with the idea you're going to walk out with a pocketful of money. You're lucky you walk out at all. So I wish it stopped giving residents money away, because you won't give it to them.
My name is Chris Janik. I'm an Elmhurst resident. I've lived in Elmhurst for 15 years, and we live in a home that is right in the flight path. And for 15 years, I've had no complaints. I've had nothing to say to the city. I knew what I was buying, and I've lived there happily for that amount of time. Within the last nine, 10 months, this fly-quiet rotation started to get fairly bothersome. I thought rotations 1 and 2 were bad, but when rotation 3 started, it really woke me up to a big problem. The more research I did and the more I looked at it, the more concerned I am, and the more concerned I am that the city council has not really lifted a finger to do much about it. I want to put it to you. I'm here to support the others that spoke this evening. I wasn't planning on coming here to speak, but I felt like I had to do something. Want to, I want to put it to you guys to really get to work and do something to support us. This actually is a quality-of-life issue. When you're trying to get to sleep at night and you've got planes landing over your house at 12 o'clock, 12:30, 1 o'clock, when you're woken up at 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning and can't get back to sleep, and you're only getting four or five hours of sleep a night, that does become a quality-of-life issue. And for that to go on for three years, if it's three months, just as an experiment, that's fine, but for a three-year period, four-year period of time, that's unacceptable, and that's going to have real long-term impacts in the city of Elmhurst. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Elmhurst for 22 years. I have a couple of things to say. Starting out, that at last week's committee meeting, an alderman commented how disappointing it was that there were few residents in attendance, and that it appeared the level of interest was dwindling. After last Wednesday, Barb and Nick, several people talked about it, which consisted of planes landing every two to four minutes between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., and Saturday morning's traffic from 2:00 to 5:30 a.m. And even some this evening, as I was putting my notes together, let me assure you that the level of interest in this issue is not dwindling. I appreciate the resolution opposing the fly-quiet runway rotation, but it was clear from the statements made last week that there's no plan in place, no strategy, once the resolution is signed. If you recall, the ONCC was in such a rush to start Test 3, they didn't even evaluate the data from Test 2. If they do the same and don't review the data from Test 3, they could make a decision on the future runway rotations as early as October 16th. And the city of Elmhurst has no strategy to help the residents fight this. Please know that residents' level of interest is not dwindling, and the only thing that is dwindling is the amount of time that we have to act. And additionally, I'd like to add that many Elmhurst residents have been commenting on social media that the planes are a problem from the north side of town to deal with, and it's our fault that we moved to that part of town. Therefore, they don't want to be involved. I reject that way of thinking. If they want to follow that line, why have the residents been moving into South Elmhurst, where it has been flooding for decades? And yet, these residents, in the last few years on the south side, have asked for help from the city to alleviate the flooding and ask the rest of the community to support them in this endeavor. The community came together on this because what makes one part of town nice lifts up our entire community. Now, we on the north side are asking the city for help. I've lived in my north side home for 18 years. Before the O'Hare expansion occurred, like someone else mentioned, we never complained. We knew where we had moved. We knew that we were on the flight path of O'Hare. However, now that the O'Hare expansion has been accomplished, the city of Chicago has gone back on their word, to use the east-west runways, and now we on the flight path do have legitimate reasons to complain. And on the north side, we are asking people from all over Elmhurst and the city council to support us, because improving the conditions in one part of town improves the community as a whole. And let's keep Elmhurst a great place to live for all residents.
The last person I have that signed in tonight is Monica Anderson.
Hello, I am Monica Anderson. I live at 368 North Walnut Street, and I've been a resident for 13 years. Tonight, I'm just basically reading what I had submitted, which is an article from the newsroom from the ONCC. And basically, it says, "O'Hare's Airport Fly-Quiet Rotation Test 3 Started the Evening of July 23, 2017." So, this is the test that has planes landing every night for one week on and one week off. Test 3 does not include runway 1533, which is slated to be decommissioned in spring of 2018. So on here, it's saying the CDA and FAA are encouraging residents to provide feedback on the test by completing the online survey that can be found at www-airportprojects.net/flyquiettest. Feedback from Test 3 will assist the Chicago Department of Aviation in developing an interim fly-quiet rotation plan that may be in place from the time of runway 1533 closure, spring 2018, through full time of runway 9C, 27C, opening fall 2020. CDA staff plans to conduct an environmental analysis and perform modeling in the fall and winter of 2017 to develop the interim plan." And it says here, "And residents' input from Test 3 will be an important element of this process." So, pretty much as everyone was talking tonight, this Test 3 excludes the use of runway 1533, so residents could experience a rotation plan that could potentially, they say, be in place once the runway is decommissioned in the spring of 2018. It's just, to me, what they were talking about tonight, Test 1, Test 2, Test 3, this is just a no-brainer. It's very unfair, and we only have a couple of weeks left to, basically, they're saying is going to make a huge difference and to determine if they're going to continue this Test 3 for 2020. So we just really somehow have to come together and figure out how you're going to inform all the residents of Elmhurst that we need to vote no. Thank you.
That was the last person that signed in.
Okay, that's it for public forum for folks who signed up. On our sign-in sheet, is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign on the sign, sign up on our sign-in sheet prior to the meeting, yet still wishes to address the council? If so, please raise your hand so I can get an idea of how many folks I got here. Okay, I see two. I'm going to start with the gentleman in the back, the light blue shirt.
My name is David Bernier. First, I want to concur with what's been said about O'Hare. I live near the high school, and I have noticed an increase in traffic. I would also echo the statement that what benefits, one part of Elmhurst benefits all parts of Elmhurst, so I would encourage everyone to continue on this issue, because it's 4 right and 2 to left is a, is a bad thing. Additionally, earlier, I had delivered a letter to the mayor on August 16th on my top, on my second topic, and a correspondence to Mr. Warner. That letter has yet to be added to the public record. The city manager said he just received it this morning. So, on August 17th, I emailed a copy to all the aldermen using CityAM. My letter details how the AMCO underdevelopment of this area is a $31 million zoning mistake by putting townhomes where offices should go, and repeatedly contradicts the vision, goals, objectives, and intent of the 2009 Elmhurst Comprehensive Plan. If you have not received this correspondence, I encourage you to delay this vote until it can be reviewed. Additionally, the city is currently undergoing sub-area plan deliberations. Wouldn't it be a prudent decision to table this request until that work is finalized, as this is such a substantial proposal? 50 years ago, a couple of single-family homes were built on these properties, causing the area to be, to be underdeveloped. Oak Brook and Oak Brook Terrace famously used this St. Butterfield Road corridor for office purposes and still reap the benefits of a non-residential tax base to this day. Now, AMCO wants to expand the residential tax burden for another 50 to 100 years. This underdevelopment will be a $30 million negative impact to the Elmhurst community as direct and indirect costs accrue over the next 50 years. $6 million will be a direct result of tax expenditures exceeding tax revenues. 5,800 students were enrolled in District 205 when I first moved to Elmhurst. Today, 8,500 students are enrolled, a 47% increase. Anybody who thinks Elmhurst needs to expand its residential tax base further needs to go to school. The impact of this development will be $25 million in new taxes on residents of District 205 due to increasing enrollments. New taxes will cause housing prices to lower. The Comprehensive Plan recognizes that Elmhurst is a mature community with few new areas for development. Page 5. The plan directs that since industrial, commercial, and office space account for less than 20% of the land uses in Elmhurst, maximum impact must be leveraged from comparatively limited non-residential developmental opportunities. Page 62. Putting townhomes here would forever squander an opportunity to leverage this area for another 50 to 100 years. AMCO's plan does not match the vision of the Comprehensive Plan, which calls for modern offices to provide employment opportunities. Page 15. AMCO's plan does not meet the goal of strengthening the employment base and enhance the overall standard of living. Page 19. AMCO's plan does not meet the objective of diversifying employment opportunities within the community. Page 19. AMCO's plan does not meet the objective of alleviating a reliance on residential property tax. Page 62. AMCO's plan does not match the future land use map depicted four times in the plan, pages 4, 23, 29, and 40. The coloring on all four maps unequivocally shows that the intent of the plan and shows the, this area's general office. A picture is simply worth 1,000 words. AMCO's proposal does not match any type of development proposed in SubArea 9, Section B. The only types are general office and multifamily residential that is higher than three stories. Page 40. Lastly, AMCO's proposal isn't even comprehensive. It is piecemeal zoning. It is unconscionable that Development Planning and Zoning Committee would recommend this proposal as meets the, its intent of the plan without acknowledging or reconciling a single material deviation from the plan. I call on the committee to retract its recommendation, and ask the city council should reject the committee's recommendation, as it is inadequate and incomplete. This is a residential development with negative benefits for the Elmhurst community. Don't make a $31 million mistake. Vote no.
Okay, there was a gentleman right there, identified himself.
Kerry Caveney, Elmhurst of resident, Elmhurst resident. I live near Mary Drew Davis Park. We've been in Elmhurst since 2000. Interestingly, when we scouted out the neighborhood to decide if we wanted to buy the house or not, I didn't see a single airplane. I came back like three times, yeah, three different occasions, no airplanes, but it is what it is. We were, we decided to stay where we are because we saw that the sound study that had been done of what the noise would be like once O'Hare was, you know, expanded, so like, well, let's just wait and see how things go. But I think that our experience will be commonplace for new residents who are thinking about buying a home in Elmhurst if they continue to have all this airplane noise. I think it's going to bring down your property values, especially on the north side of town, and that would be bad for everybody, and that's just, just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at this time who wishes to address council? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. That concludes our public forum portion of the meeting. Onto announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Let's, we're going to take like a 30-second pause. Anybody who wishes to step out, feel free to do so. Alderman Plumpsky.
Thank you, Mayor. The Elmhurst Commission-
Alderman Plumpsky, please, speak into the microphone.
Got it. The Elmhurst Commission on Youth, along with Lyndon Oats, Lyndon Oaks Behavioral Health, is sponsoring a presentation about anxiety in schools, the effects of anxiety on learning, and how to get help when anxiety becomes a problem. Presented by Dr. Laura Kohler, licensed clinical psychologist, this program is this Thursday, August, or on Thursday, August 29th next week, at 7:30 p.m. at Bryan Middle School. It's immediately following middle school curriculum night. Additionally, on Saturday, September 9th, Jared Payton will be presenting his project No Bull to Elmhurst families at Sandberg Middle School, beginning at 9 a.m. Sponsored by Commission on Youth, is an in-school anti-bullying program, so there are programs in school, and also the Saturday gathering will focus on encouraging young people to speak out in person and online.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, going on to the consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda? Any alderman wishes to have removed? Provide further comment or vote no. Alderman Hanquist, 5-34, please. Alderman Bram.
5.21.
Anything else? I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item 5- I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 5.21 and item 5.34. Motion to approve consent agenda minus those two items. Motion by Alderman Hanquist. Second by Alderman York. Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
14 ayes, 1 nays.
14 ayes, 1 nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus items 5.21 and 5.34. Is 5.21 this? Hold on a second. I got it. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation on agenda item 5.21.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the city council approve the installation of the new traffic control signage at the Adams Street, Bryan Street, and Adams Street, Washington Street intersections as recommended above. The committee recommends the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Furthermore, in interest of getting the new signage installed as soon as possible with school starting, the committee recommends that the council suspend with the rules to allow approval of said documents at the same meeting. Signed by Scott Levin, Chairman; Danny Palmsky, Vice Chairman; Bob Dunn.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin. Second by Alderman Palmsky. Alderman Levin, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. As the clerk has adequately summed it up, this is the need for traffic control that has been identified because of work that has been done at Madison School, where we've installed some, around Madison School, we've installed some new facilities, and there's some new T-intersections there, and because of the school being adjacent to it and some unique circumstances, it was recommended and agreed that a three-way stop sign should be installed.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming in tonight, to tonight, I was thinking about discussing the merits for or against these two proposals, which is put in, these two intersections are put in one report. But the real reason why I pulled this is because I cannot come to a conclusion on if the proposed recommendations in this one report for both of these intersections is appropriate or not. The reason for it, in my 14 years of being alderman, I have never made a stop sign decision, and a recommendation has never been made, from my recollection, without a report from city staff with data talking about the MUTCD criteria and guidelines. In this recommendation, in the committee meeting agenda and minutes, there's no state of what the data points are for these two intersections. There's nothing about traffic volumes, there's nothing about speed, there's nothing about accidents. Now, in the report itself, the recommendation report from the committee, the committee is making these statements, that the staff said that, but the actual data, like one of the other agenda items on the consent agenda, Indiana and Beldon, has a report from city staff saying what the average speed is, saying what the 85 percentile is, saying that there was two accidents within the same month of May of 2017, saying all this stuff. So, I understand that recommendation. But this recommendation has no supporting data. So, I don't know if I could support what the recommendation is or not support what the recommendation is, because there's no data for me at least to back up and justify that this is the right decision. I want to remind everyone that in the past, there has been challenges within the city of Elmhurst when there were stop signs put up that didn't, to one's opinion at least, that didn't meet the warrants. This is a very serious topic. On one of these intersections that is being recommended for adding traffic control, adding additional stop signs, there's been no accidents, and that's one of the MUTCD criteria in regards to accidents. But we're moving forward with no data points to support the actual recommendation. So, it's not about what I feel is right or wrong, because I can't make that judgment here, because there's no data behind the recommendation, and therefore, I can't support it. I would like to respectfully request that the committee take this back to committee until we actually have those data reports, points from the city staff.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Levin.
I just want to point out that the, for those of you that didn't get to see this, this is the field that is just to the south side of Madison School. Adams Street formerly ran through and connected Washington and Bryan. As part of the project, Adams Street has been closed out. So, it was, it's just recently finished. So, there, whatever data we could have would be weeks old, it would not have any real significance, in my opinion. I guess we could wait a couple of years and see if accidents happen or not, but there was enough concern by the proximity to the school. It's basically the back corner of two sides of the school, and we relied upon our in-house traffic engineers, and the committee was comfortable that for a number of reasons, that even though there was, instead of waiting for data, that this makes sense. There's already a two-way stop sign at each, and we're basically making it a three-way stop sign.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular intersection, or the pair of intersections, went before the committee on two occasions. The first time, we reviewed the intersection, the intersections, and the initial recommendation by city staff, and did ask for some more information. And that, the second time we met, that information was provided. We've got a better before-and-after picture of those intersections. The current stop signs don't make sense because we took out a street, and you have stop signs that are not consistent with the new flow. I personally am very critical about adding stop signs, unless it's very necessary. The one other reason that we delayed it for, to the next meeting was so that the members of the committee could go view the intersections in question. And viewing those intersections, it was clear that this is a special circumstance. A road was closed. The house at the corner of Washington and Adams has a driveway that's west of that intersection. It's actually this part of the old street, and there was concern that there might be people continuing to go straight west on Adams. There is appearance of a small street there, especially when it snowed, where you'd lose all visibility. That became a concern that the drivers would maybe, their perception would be such that they might continue straight, which would be, could be very dangerous. Also, that person in that, that lives in that house was, is having a lot of difficulty getting out of their driveway. So, it made a lot of sense to put the additional stop sign on the, on Adams going westbound, and to, looking at the Bryan-Adams, Bryan-Adams intersection just west of there, we felt it made a lot of sense to pair those traffic patterns up. So, we felt we got sufficient additional information from staff on the justification for making this change. The current state was not, needed to be changed, and we felt that this was the correct change. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Yes, just a couple of comments in regards to Adams and Washington and the additional information that was provided. The additional information that was provided was an overhead of what is current, an overhead view of these two intersections of what is current and what it would look like proposed. So, little symbols of stop signs for both of those intersections. That was the additional information provided, where the other agenda item, Indiana and Beldon, had a full-blown report. There's a big difference. Traffic control devices are traffic control devices, and they need to be, in my view at least, studied appropriately and equally for each one that comes across. Each one that comes across should be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, and I agree with that, because there's different parameters. With that said, I would argue that this is less hazardous now because you don't have an east-west-through street going through Adams between Washington and Bryan. So, you actually have less traffic around the school. So, that would make it, at least in my perspective, more safe compared to less safe. I remind everyone that there is absolutely no accident history at Washington and Adams intersection to date, none, but we're adding additional traffic control devices. In regards to what has been called the driveway to this home, technically, yes, this access only leads to one home because of the stormwater detention we did at Madison School. With that said, it's not owned by the homeowner. It's owned by the city of Elmhurst. It's maintained by the city of Elmhurst. It is technically a street. The proposal before us is showing a three-way stop, which means when this homeowner decides to leave their house, they have every right to just pull out into the street because it's not a four-way stop. They have every right. Talk about confusion. That, to me, leads to confusion because it is directly lined up with Adams going to the west, and this is telling everybody else to stop at this intersection except that homeowner. There's no traffic control device there. I think this adds more confusion. I definitely agree, there could be some issues, since this is not the size of a regular street in the city of Elmhurst, and there should be, there could be some concerns from the resident, and I'm sure they have encountered those. But I wish we would see some data to back that up. We do line-of-sight studies all the time. I am concerned that it's only a three-way stop and not a four-way stop. What if visitors park in that street to this one residential home and decide they're done with the party, and they're pulling out without stopping, without yielding at all? Because they legally do not have to stop. That's a large concern. The other intersection on Bryan and Adams has had some accident history. But I also say, no matter if this has changed within the last handful of months or not, this has been going on every school year for many and many a years. So, the urgency that's stated, that this has to be done today because of the new school year, doesn't seem to be urgent for all agenda items tonight, just this one. So, I have a, I have a bad feeling in regards to us, A, suspending the rules for something that, at least in my perspective, doesn't need to have the rule suspended, because as someone already mentioned tonight, what's just two weeks? But B, the biggest concern is, is this the right configuration, and where's the data to prove it?
Any other comments? Alderman Mulliner.
I hate to prolong this discussion. This is an intersection where there's a school, a playground, if you will, even though it's a retention pond at this point, it's also a playground. And we have typically, over the years, and I understand where you're coming from, Alderman, but we've typically, over the years, allowed more flexibility at school locations because of the fact that there's some safety issues that are above and beyond what are typically recorded. So, I can support this completely because of the fact that it's at a school, and I think that it leads to, those streets also lead to the junior high, which is right down the block from there, so you've got a number of students who are walking down it. So, I think this is a good move. I think this is a logical thing to do at this location because of the changes that we made happen at that location.
Any other comments? Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to speak to a couple of the points made. This is the first time a school year will be starting when the city had, has filled in that area that is now the detention basin. And again, this is the only agenda item we have on here that includes traffic control signs that are adjacent to a school property. And then, the additional information that was presented to our committee, the way I see it is, was the expertise and judgment of traffic engineers, and we relied upon that to make our recommendation. Thanks.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
13 ayes, 1 nays.
13 ayes, 1 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 5.21 is approved. Onto agenda item 5.34. It's an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a sales tax-sharing agreement between the city of Elmhurst and I Motorsports, Inc.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist. Second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, we had a few updates. I was going to turn over to City Attorney Starino and Assistant City Manager Kopp, just to fill us in. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I know, I made aware before the meeting that there is two scrivener's errors in what's on board. Oh, no, actually, the board docs has been changed, I believe. But two scrivener's errors as to what was posted last Thursday, plus I know that there were some dates that weren't filled in that are now filled in, just to give council one idea. City manager, or City Attorney Starino, do you want to address those specifically?
Unless somebody on the council would like us to, but they are what the chairman and the mayor have said. There's two dates that were scrivener's errors that have been modified on board docs, and then there are some dates on page eight that needed to be inserted. They are benchmarks for, for the owner, the company, to meet, and that data was provided just really very late today. So, in an effort to present to the council a complete document, those modifications were made and placed on board docs.
Any questions on the changes before we move on? Alderman Bram?
Well, I don't have questions because I'm not sure exactly what the changes were, and I'm trying to scroll through to find them.
Well, I'm happy to, I have a list from Alderman, from Assistant City Manager Kopp. I'm happy to specifically list them for you if that would help, Alderman Bram.
Well, I think, unless I'm the only one, seeing the changes as we sit here, I think it'd be helpful for everyone.
No, that's okay, I got it. Two scrivener's errors. Page three, section three. If anybody wants to scroll to it on board docs. Page three, section three. We removed December 31st, 2030.
Change to remove that.
That's on the next page. Do I see that done? Do I have the wrong one?
No, you said it. I think you said it.
Okay. Scrivener error number two, page four, section 5D. Meet the 12-year agreement date. The date was changed from 2031 to 2030. Okay, dates that were inserted, two were inserted, one was replaced just for a correction. All of these are in section 10. A. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
All right. A, is that correct, Don?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
All right. 10A, paragraph double I, inserted March 1st, 2018. I think it was blank previously. Section 10A, paragraph 3I. It used to say June 30th. It was updated now to February 1st, 2018. And the next section, we'll call it four. There wasn't a date, and the date has been added, April 1st, 2018. Any questions on those additions? I guess I'd ask the chairman or a city attorney, while these have tightened up the information in it, are there any substantive changes to the spirit of the document?
No, there were no substantive changes, just those scrivener's errors and insertion of dates.
Okay, so we swapped out one date, added two, and made two scrivener's errors. Any other comments or questions as it relates to the changes that have been made at this point? As I said, it was corrected on board docs. I'll turn it over to Chairman Hanquist.
Oh, that's correct, sir.
But?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
And the floor is yours if you want to expound on your...
No, I, I second what's been discussed by City Attorney.
Okay, we do have a motion before us. Ordinance as read by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Any additional comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize if some of these touch on the changes that were just noted at this time. I wanted to kind of walk through the RDA and at least touch on what I believed was the intent of the report and how that reflects in the RDA, because some of what's in the RDA or this ordinance is different than what my understanding was when we moved forward with the report on this item. On page one, I don't know what paragraph, after, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh paragraph, which is just one sentence, whereas the estimated cost to the company to complete the required renovations exceeds $1 million, and then it goes on to the next whereas. My understanding, Alderman Toledo, made an adjustment for the report that was passed two weeks ago, that it was to minus the cost of the equipment. So this should actually be reflected as $800,000, because the cost of the equipment was $200,000 according to the applicant's own information compared to a million. I also spoke to this when we were talking to the report two weeks ago. On page three, it actually reiterates the statement that I just made, the first paragraph on page three. I highlighted it myself, it's about midway through the paragraph, making a statement saying excluding any equipment related to the service department, and I won't go any further. So part of the RDA reflects in the verbiage that we're excluding the equipment, but then the dollar amount is reflecting with the equipment. So I think there's a contradiction there in our own RDA. In regards to whatever, paragraph three, the term paragraph that we just spoke about, that the changes were made, and I appreciate those changes, I'm a little bit unclear unless someone, the city attorney or city manager can assist, or the committee, in regards to the start of when this agreement begins? Because if we're eliminating the termination date, and we're only saying in here the 12th annual period, when does this actually start is the big question. My understanding prior to this meeting was January 1st, 2018, but I'm not sure if that is accurate now, especially with some of these other changes that were just, again, noted tonight before us. On page four, and this I think is pretty significant, on page four, item five, the payment schedule, and I highlighted upon the issuance of all building permits for the renovations, and this is something that I did not take away from the report, and there's no discussion on it when we discussed the report. Upon the issuance of all building permits for the renovations, the city shall pay company $100,000 as an advance against the company's share to be used by the company for a portion of the renovation expenses. And here's what I didn't take away from our last discussion. If they got the building permits tomorrow, we're giving them the $100,000, we can give them $100,000. So to me, that advances the $100,000, which I have called in the past an interest-free loan, that advances that loan prior to even January of 2018. So this is something that I did not take, I don't think it was documented in the report, I'd have to go back to the report to verify, that the contingency tied to the $100,000, it's not the beginning of the year, which I thought would be the beginning of what they call it, the first annual term. It could be tomorrow if the building permits are already in hand. So not only are we giving an agreement that, or giving dollars for 12 years now, we're giving in 12 years and, whatever, three and a half months, three months and a couple of weeks, whatever it is. So it's even further extended, which I'm concerned about that, and why would we do such a thing? And again, it goes back to when we're reflecting the beginning of this, when this agreement begins. On the same page, item D on page four, no payment shall be made to the company for sales tax generated by the operations for the, and I don't know if this is what was modified. It says for the 2030 compared to what it did say on the 2031 tax year. So I'm confused on why it's 2030 and not 2029, because I would think that that would now be 2029, because if we're talking about 12 years, 12 years would end at the end of 2029, I thought. And then I think the last piece that I highlighted. On page five, paragraph, or item G, the first paragraph on that page, notwithstanding anything contained in the agreement to the contrary, the amount that the city shall be obligated to rebate to the company during the term of this agreement shall not exceed $500,000 or the total renovation expenses, whichever is less. Now, this is great if the renovation expenses is a million, if it's $800,000, if it's $600,000, or $500,000 and $1. But for some miracle, if they're able to find a great contracting service to come in under budget and come in at $400,000 total renovation cost, that means the city's taxpayers have paid 100% of their renovation. This should not say, or the total of the renovation expenses, because if they come under $500,000, we're paying 100% of their build-out costs. That's not the intent of the report, at least the way I understood it. The intent of the report is to max it out at $500,000 with the assumption that we're going to $800,000, well, according to the RDA, a million, but according to myself at least, my perception is $800,000. So already, I already stated two weeks ago that I think the report is too generous. I think this is too generous in regards to, for the applicant themselves, and not generous enough for the taxpayer. But with this paragraph in itself, if they come anything under $500,000, or $500,000 and less, the city taxpayers pay 100% of the build-out. That's not the intent of the report. That's, would be nothing that I would ever approve, and, and this, to me, is a linchpin on how this should not move forward. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just address two topics that I heard. One topic is in section two, paragraph J. We did address, as per conversations in past meetings, the equipment portion, which specifically that piece has been removed. So this RDA provides that none of the city funds will be used for any equipment, personal property that is required during the renovation. It will all be attached to the property. So that was addressed. Secondly, the fact of the matter on the term, I think we all want to protect taxpayer dollars. The term starts when we approve this tonight, so that if and when money is distributed, we are protected by the other clauses. If this business goes against the agreement, we can recoup our dollars. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
Just a couple of technical clarifications with the wording in a couple spots. If we look at the, the sales tax sharing agreement, the second page, the first whereas, the previous version that we reviewed, I guess middle of last week it came out, or no, it came out for the DPZ meeting last Monday, talked about the Indian franchise and how the sales tax rebates to be provided to the company, which is I Motorsports, shall be calculated based on the sales tax revenue generated by the Indian franchise. So there was inferred a segmentation between the Indian franchise and the rest of the business is what I thought the intent was. And in this latest version, we have that the rebates are to be made and calculated and made solely on sales from the operations, which is everything based on the definition below. So I'd like to get clarification on what those entities are and how, and can we separate? Are we trying to separate anything, and how would we do that? That's the first question.
I'm sorry, Alderman Dunn, I want you to clarify that a little bit, because I want to make sure, if you do have a question, I want to understand it. Your question is how we calculate the increment? Is that the question?
No, the entity that we are affording back sales tax rebates to. The, the calculation, so yes, are we segmenting the I Motorsports Corporation to Indian and everything that's not Indian that was existing prior? And if we are, how is that being done?
Well, let me stop you there, because I don't, it seems like a rather specific question. City manager, do you have any, or Mr. Storino, can you clarify, I guess, what I'm asking for?
I think the, if I say this, and the chairman can certainly, or anybody else on the committee, or of course, Assistant Manager Cope, but I think the effort was made to try, or Tom Truzin for that matter, all of which have weighed in and worked on this. But I think the effort was made to try to figure out whether or not we could specifically identify only Indian. I think it was determined that that would be a very, very difficult task, and therefore we should look at the gross amount that came in from, from, from the dealership. We did use an amendment to try to do our best to identify only the Indian sales, and hopefully that will be accomplished through the amendment that the council just passed, which will identify sales tax that go to fulfill that first RDA that this petitioner has, and then the balance through this, through this RDA.
Okay.
So that was the attempt, to try to identify Indian without being able to go to the IDR and say, give us only Indian, which we didn't think could get done.
Alderman Dunn, you had to follow up. Floor's still yours.
Another question on, I believe it's page six, which was number eight in the previous agreement, but now it's number seven, the personal guarantee on the $100,000. It reads, the person, personal guarantors, guarantee repayment of the advancement made by the city, such that if they terminate the agreement, that they need to repay that. So I am just wondering, there's no names or organizations attached to that? When, when I hear the word personal, I think that it's probably someone in particular that is on the hook for that, probably the major investor, but I'm not understanding how that would be tracked down and executed if there was a problem.
Go ahead.
It's Tim Walter, and I can't pronounce it. Hater Saba. They are the two individuals that are personally guaranteeing. They will sign the RDA, they're identified in the first paragraph, and they are called out in the signature page, both jointly and severally and individually. So they would be the people that would have to stand behind personally this agreement.
Okay, so just to clarify, because they are signing the agreement, they, it is unequivocally called out that they are the personal guarantors.
Alderman Levin?
I just want to make, if I understood the, you referred to the IDR was Illinois Department of Revenue, saying it would be difficult to get the specific Indian sales numbers from that department, is that correct?
That's what I understand.
All right, but don't all franchise, vehicle franchise, franchisees have to report to the franchisor on a monthly basis what their sales are so that we could ask for copies of their franchisor's sales reports?
I won't speak for the committee, but I think this was discussed, both with the committee and with staff, and I think this, it was determined that this would be the best way to track these sales.
Any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. In regards to some of the comments made from my initial comments, I agree, and I stated it in my initial comments, that on page three, it does state about excluding the equipment, but the whereas in the beginning doesn't reflect that. That was my point there. In regards to the other thing, in regards to the term, if it's starting as soon as the ink is dry on the RDA, which means whatever, tonight, tomorrow, whenever, then it's in direct contradiction on page two in the definitions, because the definitions reference the annual period. The annual period throughout this RDA says that there will be 12. And the annual period defined on page two, item 2C, means calendar year periods between January 1st and ending on December 31st of that year. The first full annual period shall start on January 1st, 2018, and end on December 31st, 2018. So the RDA, to me, my understanding of it, conflicts with one another. Because if it's stating in part of the RDA that we can provide $100,000 to this applicant as soon as building permits are issued, and if building permits are issued prior to the annual period, which the first one is January 1st, 2018, then it's contradictory to itself. That's why I asked for the clarification. That's why if we do go down that road, it wouldn't be 12-year agreement, it'll be a 12-year and three-month and two-week agreement, as I stated in my initial comments. So I think what's written here tonight, what's written before us, it is at least confusing to me. I think it has contradictory information on when the annual period starts, because if we're given $100,000 before Jan. 1, unless I'm hearing from someone, then that's not going to happen, that that interest-free loan doesn't happen before Jan. 1, then it contradicts with the definition, and it contradicts with multiple areas in this RDA that says that there's only 12 annual periods.
Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Thirteen ayes, one nays.
Thirteen ayes, one nay. Motion carries, agenda five, 5.34 is approved. That's it for consent agenda. To committee reports, 6.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Works in Building Committee that the 16-foot by 56-foot alley, alley, directly adjacent 437 Hillside Avenue, as shown on the attached drawing, be vacated for no cost, and that the city attorney be authorized to prepare the necessary documents for this vacation, and that the appropriate city officials be authorized to sign said documents. Signed by Jim Kennedy, Chairman, Norm Leader, unsigned by Marty Deuter and Michael J. Bram.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Leader. Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is for the vacation of a piece of property at 437 Hillside. This property backs up to what is the apartment complex that's just south of the tracks on Spring Road. Just a little bit about the vacation policy, if a resident comes to the city and asks to buy a piece of property, city goes, does the, does a survey, determines the size of that property, and then does a calculation of the EAV, takes 50% of that value based on what our policy is, and then brings that to Public Works for review. So in this case, the dimensions of this area are 16 by 56. It's at the, again, the back end of the property. It is an unimproved public alley that has never been used as an alley by the city, and on that property is a permanent public utility easement. So regardless of what happens tonight or in the future, that area cannot be developed because of the fact of the utilities that are present there. Based on that calculation of that 50% EAV, it comes to just over $3,600. And, and my view, and Alderman Leader, who also signed the report, is this should be given to the resident for zero cost, mainly because of the fact that the, that area cannot be improved in any way, can't be built upon, can't be used for roadway, whatever, because of the utility easement that's under there. In its history, because it's an unimproved alley, it's never really been maintained by the city. So this resident and those individuals that have owned this property in the past have always maintained it to some way, shape, or form. And what this resident is really looking to do is to just be able to put a fence around it and landscape it and make it look like a viable, viable part of his yard, because today, he doesn't own it and really shouldn't be on it to do any sort of maintenance, but because of the fact it's at the back end of his lot, wants his yard to look decent, he maintains it. In terms of the cost for this resident, if, regardless of whether he pays for it or we, we give it to him at no cost, there's about $1,500 in survey costs and attorney's fees. You add in the fact he wants to put a fence around it, he wants to landscape it, he's going to put in about $3,000 into something that, to the city, really has little to no value. You know, you talked about a willing buyer, a willing seller. The city has a value on it because it is an easement, but to the homeowner who, whose property is adjacent to it, if he doesn't take it, it's really of no value to anybody else out there. So my belief is to get this onto the tax rolls, to be able to get a benefit to the city, that it's best to give it to the resident at no cost, because again, the easement exists for the utilities, and we get the benefit today and tomorrow and in the future of that piece of property being taxed for the future indefinite. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will speak to, if I may have the latitude, if you will, to speak to the majority as well as the minority in one, is that?
Absolutely, as we often do in minority-majority report situations. There's a lot of overlap, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About it. This, just like stop signs, has always been a controversial issue here in the city of Elmhurst. If you go over the history of what the city of Elmhurst has done with right-of-way vacations, it's really all over the board. As Alderman Kennedy already stated, you know, there's definitely a higher value put when a property owner is acquiring or asking to acquire a right-of-way that could make that piece of property either divisible, subdivisible into two lots or more, or they could build a bigger addition, or something along those lines. So of course, there's definitely some added value, I would stress added value, when that is the case. In this instance, it is, of course, unique, because it is a case-by-case assessment, per our own policy states that. The policy, just to touch on that a little bit more, it does state that it's, the starting point is recommended to be 50% EAV. Now keep in mind, 50% EAV, assessed value, not market value, so if you multiply the EAV times three, approximately you'd kind of be in the ballpark of probably the market value, but market value varies, as everybody knows, day-to-day, month-to-month. But this is EAV, so this is an assessed value, so it's a big difference between what the market value is and the assessed value. So I've always, and I've said this in committee during the debate of this issue, have always even contended that the policy is very generous to its own residents, that we're utilizing the EAV and not market value. So already, if someone comes to us and inquires in wanting to take over or purchase a right-of-way, they're already getting, at least in my mind, a better deal, because we're not saying, "Okay, let's do a market analysis and find out exactly how much that should be." Typically, EAV is cheaper than the market value, typically, not always, but I would say the majority of the time. So I think if I was a homeowner, I would, of course, if I have a right-of-way on the side of me, behind me, whatever, I would approach the city too, because of the fact that our policy does state that it's 50% EAV. In this case, that value is $4 a square foot. Where are you going to get some property at $4 a square foot in the city of Elmhurst? 50% value, or 50% EAV is $4 a square foot, according to the calculations here. That's a deal. That's a deal to begin with, at least in my estimation. Now, the policy does state that you can go above, below, add, subtract, whatever you want to do. A lot of the times in, in the history that, when it's divisible, there's no, there has been no budging. 50% was the bare minimum, sometimes it was even higher. Yes, there's an easement on this piece of property. Yes, it's a relatively new house, so I don't forecast the applicant building an addition or building on or anything like that. I don't know, but that's what would be my judgment. But I will say, there is a benefit to the applicant for getting it at this price. As soon as they sign the dotted line, that adds value to their home. Yes, they've been maintaining it, but yes, they've been able to use it the whole time too, without paying taxes on it or anything. So it adds value right away. The other main benefit, if they so chose, was if they wanted to do any addition, say a patio, for instance, if they did a patio, then this piece of property would add to their calculation, their, oh, I'm having a hard time with the words.
Permeable.
Permeable, thank you, Alderman Dunn. Permeable policy, so they would add to our calculation, so they would be able to have either a larger patio or a patio at all. I don't know what the calculation would be in this instance. So there is benefit. Property value increase, more so, at least in my estimation, compared to what they'd be paying for the property, and if they wanted to do any type of addition, it would be included in the permeable algorithm. So that's two big benefits. Now, the discussion here is zero, or my minority report is 3,600 and change. Where do we go? I don't always, in, in committee, we discussed maybe finding a middle ground, but we couldn't come to that conclusion, and that's why you have a majority-minority report before you. This is a city asset. Would you be willing to give up your property for zero cost? Any segment of your property? Would you go up to your neighbor tomorrow and say, "Here's 896 square feet of my property. Take it. Don't worry about it, I'm a nice guy, no charge." No, because it has value to you. So yes, there's definitely, and according to the policy, it's a must-have, but there are costs in regards to the survey work and all of that. But this has value, we should get some non-zero dollars for it. None of us, or at least I would guess, none of us would say, "Take 896 square feet of my property to your neighbor tomorrow." We, as a city, shouldn't be giving away our asset for free. You can argue it's 3,600, too much or too little. I definitely think non-zero is the appropriate way to go. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to substitute the minority report for the majority report.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to substitute the minority for the majority. Put this before council, I'll need a second. Second by Alderman Park. Okay, we now have a substitute motion for the minority report to replace the majority. Additional conversation or comments? Alderman, I'll go with Alderman Park, she made the second, let's see what she has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit nervous, my first time talking. But it's my understanding that along the same alleyway, there are other residences who have purchased that parcel behind them, and to remain consistent and fair with everybody, we aren't charging them an arm and a leg, it is an amount that seems quite reasonable for a portion of our city, that I second what Alderman Bram is saying, that going with the calculation of the, using the EVA and $3,600, because they also do have an option. It's my understanding that they could just apply to the city and move their fence, and still have the easement, and maintain it as they would, but they, I understand that this resident really wants to buy it, so if they really want to buy it, we should have that option where they would buy it at a fair price that's equitable and consistent with what we've done in other areas.
Okay. Alderman Leader.
I will be short and sweet in my remarks, and I must apologize if I respectfully differ from any of my learned, esteemed, and honorable colleagues on the committee on this issue of vacations. All vacations differ quantitatively and qualitively from all other vacations, and they must be viewed on their own merits. Vacations are like snowflakes. There are no two vacations alike. We're talking about a small sliver of land that costs the city nothing to purchase, nothing to purchase. And though it has been part of Elmhurst since Abe Lincoln was riding the legal circuits, it has never yielded the city a penny, not one penny. This is not a buildable lot, it has no functional value to the city of Elmhurst. The only possible value is to the homeowner. The homeowner has and is maintaining the property. There is a city easement on the property. If we put it on the tax rolls, it will be yielding a return to the taxpayers of Elmhurst for as long as there ever will be in Elmhurst, and the homeowner will pay the additional tax as long as he lives in the house. And if his property accrues any additional value, then the property will be assessed at a higher valuation, and he will pay an even higher tax. And it's, pardon me, pardon me, okay. An esteemed Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, Charles Evans Hughes, once said, quote, "We are under a constitution, but the constitution is what the judges say it is," unquote. Certainly, any past city council policies are not the Constitution of the United States or the Ten Commandments. They are totally and utterly non-binding. They are totally and utterly non-binding reflections of past city councils made by forgotten or nearly forgotten aldermen. If the law is what the judges say it is, then the policy is what you, sitting alderman tonight, and this city council says it is. Policy is a living document. There are no two vacations alike. I suggest the best policy should be common sense, but there is one policy I have always believed in, and that is, the city of Elmhurst should never, never, never turn a profit at a taxpayer's expense. And selling something that costs us nothing is the very definition of turning a profit. I'm always grateful when a homeowner steps forward and says, "I will take the responsibility for this fallow, non-yielding, non-buildable piece of property, and I will pay all additional taxes and approve it. And in the process, all Elmhurst will benefit from this new perpetual source of income." Let us encourage these people rather than discourage them. I oppose the minority report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional comments on the motion before us? Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, there were a couple of points made, and just wanted to clarify a few things. Yes, there were other properties in this area that did have vacations in the past. I think the one that is adjacent, adjacent to this property did have a vacation. In that case, there was no easement involved, and so it added to the, the size of the lot and ultimately led to a more, a larger house to be built. So in many cases, not just that one, but other places in town where that has happened, we have used a number similar to what that 50% EAV value is because of the benefit to the homeowner and to the benefit of the city ultimately from a larger structure. In terms of this property being added to the one in question here, if the, if and when the, the resident were to get it or purchase it, whatever, any, any improvement they made to their property that increased the amount of net impervious, regardless it's on their existing property or the added property, they would still have to mitigate the additional stormwater runoff regardless. So it doesn't ma, shouldn't matter whether they're putting a patio in or whatever they're doing, they would still have to mitigate based on the, the policy that we have in place for that. You know, the one thing that Alderman Bram brought up is the, you know, the, the price of it and the, you know, market value versus EAV, I don't even think that's part of the conversation, because if you're going to buy a piece of property and you were going to be permanently encumbered by the fact there was an easement on it, I struggle with why that would have any value to a person. And again, it goes back to the point I made earlier, is that here's a person that's willing to maintain this ad infinitum, make it better, and take it off, ultimately take it off our hands, as, as Alderman Leader stated, take away that liability and give us the tax benefit for that property going forward. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Alderman Park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to follow up with a question. I hear you saying that, Alderman Kennedy, that there have been instances where we have sold that little alley parcel in different areas so that someone could build something larger. So, but we've sold them for a dollar amount, not for nothing? Is that, excuse my not-knowing history.
Alderman Kennedy, aware of any of the dollar amounts paid for past evens?
There, there have been dollar amounts paid, I can't say specifically, it's typically been in that range of the 50%, and then there's been other components, if you will, that have typically taken that number down rather than above the 50%.
Yeah, and, and the reason that I ask is just, I, and again, quite new, but in my mind, just this kind of piece of land and how it relates to the city and everything, I would see these as being more similar than not, like instead of snowflakes, maybe, you know, they're all made of ice, and so there are some similarities. But that, again, my feeling the need to speak about this is just to be fair to all residents, not to make money off of our residents, but to be fair to all of our residents, because if I had purchased my piece of the alley, and then my neighbor went to go and apply and to do so, and like, "Oh, here, we'll give it to you because someone already bought it, so we can't actually make an alley out of this," that just would sit with me not well. So just in all fairness, precedence, and being equitable to everybody, if we're going to to follow a similar algorithm.
Okay. Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to speak to Alderman Park's questions I asked this of staff. 537 Walnut, there is a...
I'm sorry, mister, I apologize. Alderman Dunn, I didn't hear what you said, the number?
It's Palomsky.
Uh, Palomsky, you're Palomsky today. Did I say Dunn?
I can get it.
I apologize. Alderman Palomsky, you listed an address that I did not hear.
Okay. I asked this question of staff today about previous sales of city parcels, divided or a portion of them being sold. So there are just five of them, I'm going to say. 537 Walnut, 3,000 square feet at $1,000. 557 North Myrtle, 1,500 square feet at $2,940. 282 Kimball was 810 square feet. That sold at $1,587.06. 282 Kimball, 2,025 square feet, $4,983. And then 366 Commonwealth, 3,000 square feet for $5,000. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Alderman Levin.
Well, I want to respond to a couple of the comments. No two vacations are alike. My family went to Cancun, and it was like round hug day two years in a row. Maybe that's not what you're talking about, Alderman Leader. I don't know. Different kind of vacation.
That's just a flake, not a snowflake.
It's just a flake. The, I've been hearing the debate, and I'm thinking, you know, when we talk about the policy is what we say it is, I can't agree with that. A policy is a guideline that we follow, and we may determine on a case-by-case basis how we apply the policy, but there should be some consistency in what we do when we adopt a policy, or we should change the policy, not just change what we do on that case-by-case basis. I also respectfully don't agree that just because you can't point to a dollar amount we paid for it, that something doesn't have value. If, you know, if we had a 10-acre lot downtown that we didn't pay for, it was always the cities, you wouldn't say it doesn't have value because we didn't pay for it. It has great value. This particular property we're talking about has less value, but it still has some value. And that's why I think if we started the policy, we determine what that sum value would be. I've listened to what was discussed about the easement, and the easement doesn't negate the value, it diminishes the value, because it means you can't do something on that land that you might otherwise be able to do without the easement. But it does have value. And in fact, because there are setback requirements, you probably couldn't build in that now-extended setback anyway. So you have more land, and the back part of your property is now a little further, and now the part that you couldn't build in before has something behind it which becomes your setback. And because when we issue permits, I don't know what this house is like on this property, the volume of the house is determined by the size of the lot. So if you give someone more square footage of land, they can build a bigger house. And there's one in another part of the Fifth Ward where we're going through the same thing of where that back line is. It has caused a lot of particular angst, I think, for our Assistant City Manager. When someone goes to sell a lot, a real estate broker will look and compare and say, "Well, what's the price per square foot?" Because that is one factor. Obviously, if there's a better house on one than another, but the per-square-foot value is important. And again, I don't know what's on this particular lot. If it's an older house that, like many in Elmhurst, may be subject to at some point being torn down, the builder will pay more because they can build a bigger house. I also do agree with what Alderman Park said, that if we do apply policies consistently, we shouldn't have a sucker policy where the first guy paid for an easement, and I agree it's a more valuable, I mean, for a piece of property, it's more valuable because there is no easement. But I do feel there should be some price to acquire this to give additional value to that property owner who now has those benefits that I just listed. I don't know if it's 50% per policy because some of the reasons that Alderman Kennedy pointed out, but I do think it has some value.
Any additional comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to hold these comments. I think they're actually a bit more relevant to a motion that I will make later, but I'll offer them now, just as everyone is considering the discussion they've heard already. So this item came to our committee and was discussed on three separate occasions, and we clearly failed to reach consensus. We actually didn't do any better than three different perspectives between the four of our committee members. I think a couple points of background that are useful. This whole process was initiated by a letter from the homeowner to the city with the request for the vacation. In that letter, he recognizes that the homeowner immediately to the north of his property purchased the similar slice of city-owned land behind his property. He, this is a quote from the letter. His letter says that they are interested in purchasing. And then the third piece is that he acknowledges he's been informed of the city policy and understands what the process will be and that the committee will set the price. I do believe we have a policy for a good reason. I think it provides helpful guidance both to staff and, you know, to us and the public. I think there are absolutely times where it makes sense to make city-owned land available at no cost. One example of that, I think, is when we're using city-owned land as a tool for economic development. I think sometimes we can use TIF dollars to spur economic development. Other times, we can use a sales tax sharing agreement. And there are times where we have an opportunity to use city-owned land to either encourage and support the growth of a business or to incentivize economic development. It's one case where I think zero cost makes sense. Another case would be when the city is receiving some really significant value from what takes place. An example of this is with the NITI development. The developer in that case was committing to providing a significant amount of stormwater detention in the form of permeable pavers in the streets and onsite detention with each property that was built, each home that was built. I think in that case, there is significant value to the city of that detention. And I think in that case, the value to the community of that detention exceeded the price that we would have been able to get for city-owned land. So a couple of times where it makes sense to deviate from the policy. In this case, as I think about the policy, and again, we had three very recent discussions on this, I think the policy provides guidance for what is an appropriate price in a typical transaction. The piece that I think makes this not your typical transaction is that we will have a permanent easement for forever on this property. We will not be able to build on it. So in my mind, there is justification for coming down from the policy starting point, the 50% EAV. In my mind, something like $1,800 seems more reasonable.
Alderman Dunn.
I too think this sliver of land has some value. I'm looking at a picture of the house and the backyard. It's nice, nice and green, and I can kind of see where the unimproved, or the actually greatly improved former alley is that appears to be utilized by the homeowner. I also see a parking lot in back of that, and there could be some interest by the owner of the apartment complex that I assume owns that parking lot to gain more land and potentially put a dumpster back there, you know, whatever they might do with additional land. That could be the case. But I think that there is value in this land, and we do have a policy that starts us off, starts the discussion off with a reasonable amount. And I think the homeowner is, has indicated they were willing to buy it. So just to give it away, it's probably not a good, is this decision by the city.
Alderman Palomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. When reviewing the reports for tonight, I saw valid points in both reports, and I appreciate the perspective that I saw in both. But I thought I would step back and think about a few questions to help guide a decision. One is, is there a guiding policy? What have been done in the past, and how will future situations proceed when this comes up again? And how would I handle this if this were my own personal property? So, you know, we touched on these tonight. There is a policy. It has been followed. We would expect it to be followed. You know, especially the fact that a neighbor has paid. And if somebody had approached me to buy my property and was willing to pay, I wouldn't, you know, just say, "Go ahead, put the checkbook away." So after hearing more from everybody tonight, I agree that this, you know, this land has value. I don't think that we should be allowing a resident to have it at no cost, but I do think that the minority report does not sufficiently address the easement. So I would agree with Alderman Deuter that there is value here. It's somewhere in between the points set in the minority report, but it's not quite, you know, that full amount because of the easement. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote for, I'll remind counsel, the substitution motion. This is to substitute the minority for the majority. Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
No.
York.
No.
Levin.
I'm sorry, are we on the substitute?
Substitute, just a motion to substitute.
No.
Park.
Yes.
Heinquist.
No.
Kennedy.
No.
Mulliner.
No.
Brennan.
No.
Sabatino.
No.
Deuter.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Leader.
No.
Palomsky.
No.
Bram.
Yes.
Two ayes, 12 nays.
Two ayes, 12 nays. Motion to substitute fails. Onto the underlying motion, which is approval of the original report, gen. item 6.1. Additional comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to amend the majority report, to delete the two references to "at no cost" and substitute that language with the words with, "for $1,800." There's one spot on page one, one spot on page two, and I think you and the clerk both have the references.
Yes. Okay. Alderman Deuter was kind enough to provide me with her motion in writing prior to this meeting. So on the first page, the last paragraph, paragraph number four, line six, it says, "At no cost will be replaced with 'for $1,800." On page two, first paragraph, line three, instead of "no," "at no cost" will be replaced with $1,800. Correct, Alderman Deuter? Okay, we have a motion to amend the majority report with those deletions and additions that I just covered. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Toledo. Additional conversation? Alderman Deuter? Anything else you want to add? Nope?
No, thank you.
Alderman Toledo.
I would just like to say that I agree with Alderman Deuter's logic. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Kennedy, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to highlight again the comments about the fact that the policy is guidance, and it's, you know, it is truly different every time it gets looked at. I've probably been through a half a dozen of these over my time in public works, and every one of them is a little bit different from one another. The other thing I'd point out, just because the resident wrote a letter saying he'd be willing to pay doesn't mean he should. You know, this is one of those things where maybe ignorance is bliss, and I don't think we should judge this case in any way based on what was written in that letter. I think the argument that was put forth in the majority report was, the value of this land is permanently encumbered by the fact that there's an easement on there, there's history that would state that, you know, he's going to have to live with the fact that he can't do anything to this, and although there's an idea that it does have some semblance of market value, he can't do anything with it. Whether or not, you know, the idea that the apartment building is going to carve a little corner there to put a dumpster in, I think is, might be a little bit out there. But in the end, I believe this should be zero value, and it's, by doing so, we get it onto the tax rolls. If the homeowner says he doesn't want to pay for it, we're not getting any value out of it. So I think it's a better idea to give it away, get the value, and move forward. Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. I guess the first question I would have is, you know, where did Alderman Deuter arrive at 16...
$1,800?
$1,800. For value of this piece of property, which is 50% of where we start with the policy? You know, the easement has been talked about a lot. The easement here is irrelevant. Alderman Levin already made the statements to it. It doesn't hamper at all, at all. It's at the setback. So it's irrelevant. It's not causing, or not preventing a buildable piece of property. It's not like it's alongside the piece of property where it makes it wider. The easement's irrelevant. We can talk about the easement all day, but it's irrelevant here. So 50%, 3,600, to me, is, was, I guess, it moved on now, is the way to go. Because the easement's irrelevant. We're just throwing it into discussion to throw it in the discussion because it doesn't impact this instance at all. And I can tell you in my 16 years that the easement only came into play when it was making a statement of, is the lot buildable or dividable or not? Not when it's ever at the setback of the property. We're talking about a piece of property that's on the setback. It increases the property value. You know, I don't think, as Alderman Leader made mention before, that we're taking advantage, paraphrasing here, of this property owner, any property owner. We have a policy. We're following those guidelines. Like I said before, non-zero it should be. I don't know if I'm supporting this dollar amount, but it is non-zero.
Okay. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll on the motion to amend, so not the full report, just the motion to amend, basically changing the cost to $1,800.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to ask a question for clarification. Since this is financial in nature, do we need a supermajority?
No. I believe that's a sale of property, among other things, but no.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll on, call the vote on the motion to amend. Clerk Spencer.
Okay. Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Heinquist.
No.
Kennedy.
No.
Mulliner.
No.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
No.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
That was a no?
That was a no.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nine ayes, five nays.
I'm sorry, Clerk Spencer, please repeat that.
Nine ayes, five nays.
Nine ayes, five nays. Motion carries. Amendment to the report goes through. Now back to the report as amended. Any additional comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Heinquist.
No.
Kennedy.
No.
Mulliner.
No.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
No.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
That was a no?
That was a no.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Nine ayes, five nays.
Nine ayes, five nays. Motion carries. Amended report carries, is approved. Onto reports and recommendations. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things, kind of a general update as it relates to communication from the city of Elmhurst. Now's as good a time as any to remind people that when there's a lot going on in the city, whether it's on our agendas or something you see in the paper, I would always encourage everyone to check our city website first, elmhurst.org. There's a whole lot of information. We redid this... Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things. Kind of a general update as it relates to communication from the city of Elmhurst. Now is as good a time as any to remind people that when there's a lot going on in the city, whether it's on our agendas or something you see in the paper, I would always encourage everyone to check our city website first, elmhurst.org. There's a whole lot of information. We redid this website about two, three years ago. At elmhurst.org, you can sign up for alert signups. You can sign up for code RED, which is an emergency alert system. You can also check our Facebook page. And also, on our first page, about halfway down or a third of the way down, are news and announcements, where that stuff rotates and is constantly changing. Speaking of rotation, I want to point out that the Fly Quiet rotate, second quarter 2017 report has been added, I believe at the request of Alderman Dunn, has been added to our city website. It's 18 pages long, kind of encapsulates Fly Quiet 2. There's some relevant data. There's some good data in there. There's also some unbelievable data. But I encourage everyone to take a look and read that. The other thing I want to mention is, and it's kind of flying under the radar, but I checked with our Director of Public Works, Howard Killian, and the Golden Meadows Retention Project is actually online as we speak. So, and I've been in contact with Ms. Sullivan. She is out of town, unfortunately, for this momentous occasion. But it's not complete yet. There's still some shaping and digging out to do about the hole, but the pipes are connected. And I know it's been at least eight years since Ms. Sullivan's been coming here. And I think, I think it's just a moment a lot of us didn't think would come. And I think it's great. I appreciate all the hard work of staff and Public Works Committee and all the Aldermen. One of the commenters tonight had, I agreed with what they said, which was, you know, when you improve certain parts of Elmhurst, you really lift all parts of Elmhurst. And this, I think, definitely achieves that. That's it for me. City Manager Grabowski.
Thank you. Two quick updates. One is on the St. Charles Road Bridge. Last meeting, I shared some news with the council and the community regarding some restrictions that were going to be on there. Later that week, we had a meeting with the Village, Villa Park, village manager and some of the public works folks. And there's some good news in that there's a temporary fix that's going to be, that was approved by their village board and will be installed in the next 60 days. And what that will do is get the lane configuration back to what it is today. It will still have the weight restrictions until the full bridge is replaced, but that's good news in terms of traffic flow from Elmhurst and Villa Park. The second piece of good news is that the lane configuration won't be as drastic as we once thought. We initially thought they were going to clo, completely close a lane. Instead, what they're going to do is shift the lanes to the south, so there will still be two lanes in each direction. What that'll do, it'll, it'll shorten up the turn lane for northbound 83, if you're eastbound in St. Charles. But considering all facts, we think that's probably the best configuration that they could have made. And that's going to be temporary for 60 days until this temporary fix can be put in. The long-term replacement of the bridge still will take, they anticipate two years. They have 80% of the funding, 80% of the $4 million that they need through a bridge replacement grant. They're working on the rest, and we committed that we would contact our state and federal officials in hopes to speed that along as well. Second item that I have is a reminder to people that we will be hosting an open house for the visioning workshop, which is regarding the sub-area plans that we're doing. That is next Tuesday here at City Hall, and that's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Any other reports? Alderman Palmsky.
Question, if City Manager may be able to update us a little further. We learned tonight some exciting news that it appears the physician is willing to take on the role to supervise or the responsibility to prescribe the EpiPens for our police officers as first responders. My questions are, are there hoops that they still need to, or we still need to jump through, or boxes we need to check? And even if there are, what does the city need to do, next steps, to see that this program goes online?
We, we learned of this today that we have the doctor that's willing to sign on the order. And so we're putting her in touch with Deputy Chief McLean to make sure that we can go through whatever training and Department of Health, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, Department of Health, sign offs on that?
It's just to say training order, but there's, there's three different programs.
So that doctor would need to basically sign off that those training programs are sufficient for our officers. And so we're going to move on that as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports? All right. Onto ordinances. 8.1. Clerk Spencer, I ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending section 44.92 entitled, Stop Intersections Enumerated of Article 4, entitled Special Stops of Chapter 44, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Elmhurst Municipal Code. In this, open parentheses, Bryan Street at Adams Street and Adams Street at Washington Street. Close parentheses. See item number 5.21. Close parentheses. And that's the ordinance.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Levin. Second by Alderman Palmsky. Alderman Levin?
This is the same report we just discussed about the stop signs, and this is the ordinance to put it into effect right away.
Any comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
13 ayes, 1 nays.
13 ayes, 1 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. Onto 8.2. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance rezoning, open print, map amendment. Close parentheses. Certain parcels approving a variation in preliminary subdivision plat for the property commonly known as 256, 260, and 262 West Butterfield Road for the AMCO Town Home Development Project. Want me to read the PIN numbers?
No, I think it's published. That's good enough. Does she need to read the PIN? We're good.
Okay.
Okay. To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the ordinance to approve the townhomes by Timothy Christian that we've supported. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Mulliner.
Just want to make sure that everybody's clear on a couple of things. One comment that was made in public comment was that this was going to have an impact on District 205. This will have zero impact on District 205. This is in the Salt Creek and Woolbrook School districts. This is not in District 205. And I want to make sure everybody understands that, that this has no impact on District 205 at all.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Brennan.
Mr. Mayor, when this report came before council four weeks ago, I voted no. The reason I voted no were concerns over Ingrass and Ingrass to Butterfield. After voting no, AMCO did reach out to me and wanted to understand my concerns, and I certainly appreciated that. I explained those concerns, and it's also through speaking with them and seeing some preliminary data coming from IDOT, I feel more comfortable with, with what's going to happen at that intersection, so I will be voting yes tonight.
Okay. Any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Agenda item 8.2. Ordinance is approved. Onto agenda item 8.3. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance granting a variation from the front yard setback requirements at the property commonly known as 650 North Kennelworth Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay. To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a porch that will be going on 650 North Kennelworth that's previously been approved. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.3 is approved. Onto 8.4. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the zoning ordinance.
An ordinance approving various map and text amendments to establish the new Central Business Core District, Central Business Outer Core Residential District, Neighborhood Transition District, and Civic Institutional District, and establish new off-street parking requirements for the Central Business Core District, the Central Business Outer Core District, and the Neighborhood Transition District in the City of Elmhurst zoning ordinance.
To put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman Hanquist?
Yes, sir. As City Clerk Spencer stated, this is passing the ordinance to update the downtown zoning code. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments? Alderman Bram?
Yes, thank you. One question on page 13, item 2. It's the first paragraph. It talks about the Central Business Core District, and I'm just wondering if this is a code change from what we're doing today. It states, "All business servicing or processing, except off-street parking, loading, or such drive-in facilities, as are specifically authorized herein, shall be conducted within completely enclosed buildings except when authorized by the mayor for outdoor seating." My understanding as of today, the city manager is the one who does the approval for outdoor seating, so I was wondering if this is a Scrivener's ear, or if this is a change, or have you, mayor, been doing the approval for outdoor seating? I don't know.
I have been doing the approval for outdoor seating.
So it's not the city manager's approval?
I have been doing the approvals for outdoor seating.
So may I, then maybe I'll be more direct. I thought per ordinance, it was per the city manager's approval.
Sure. Well, to further clarify, actually, we did, there's kind of a two-step process. But when there's a liquor license involved, I seek input from Public Safety, and then I approve. City manager can allow for general seating outside. That make sense?
Okay. So now I'm even more confused. So does the city manager approve outdoor seating, or yourself, or a combination of both?
Combination of both.
Because this says authorized by the mayor for outdoor seating. So that's why I'm confused. I thought it was the city manager. I understand you're the liquor commissioner, and you approve that aspect of anything, including if it pertains to outdoor seating. But in this instance, it says you, moving forward, will be doing all the approval for outdoor seating, and the city manager will not.
I don't think it says the city manager will not. It just says that I will.
Isn't that one and the same?
I don't think so. But I can ask city attorney if there's an issue here.
I don't think so. At the moment, I think they can be read together. So I'm, I'm not seeing a problem.
Okay. The second piece was, and I stated it during the report aspect of this, the vision for the Central Business Core, what is being referenced here, is to give per right six-story access, and then upon conditional use, 10-story access for the central core, Central Business Core. And that's just not what I've heard from my residents, as well as my view of what the core should look like. So I cannot support this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
No.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
12 ayes, 2 nays.
12 ayes, 2 nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.4 is approved. Onto agenda item 9, Resolutions. Onto agenda item nine, resolutions, Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
Resolution in opposition to the city of Elm, no, let me read that over again, resolution in opposition to the city of Chicago's Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Test Program, I was too excited.
Are you excited about the resolution?
Sure.
Clerk Spencer? Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Palmski, Alderman Levin, your resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, this resolution is intended to be a statement by the city of Elmhurst to put on more formal ground our opposition to this Fly Quiet program. It will be one piece of what we need to do, I think everyone heard the concerns expressed by the residents tonight, and we should all be mindful of what we heard. I will say, just for the record, I don't know that any alderman said that we saw any sign that there were not people at the last meeting as being some sort of waning interest in it by the residents, I think someone made a comment that there were a number of people who weren't there because there were two oh five activities, we didn't say that. This is an important resolution, I don't think anyone feels that this in itself is going to be delivered at either Alderman Dunn or City Manager Grabowski, at the appropriate time is going to carry the day, it is one important tool to have our council be of record and state our opposition in a formal manner, and that's what this resolution is intended to do.
Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor, I see this resolution as, as Alderman Levin said, a more formal statement, I think a more, a more formal statement is the one that we have submitted, but I think more importantly, that this interest, this resolution has increased the activity, the awareness of Fly Quiet, and has energized residents, so I think that may be the most important outcome from this, and hopefully, this will help encourage people to go to our website, to go to the survey about Fly Quiet, to indicate that they no longer would like to see the test rotation three extended at any other period of time, and then to continue to also indicate, when they have a complaint, you may file a complaint multiple times when there are multiple complaints, but again, I think this is, it's helpful, it's part of a series of actions that we take and have been taking, but I most appreciate hearing from residents and that their interest is encouraging them to come to council meetings and discuss this, and hopefully create a buzz about providing feedback, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Dunn, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Just to follow up what Alderman Levin and Alderman Palmski said, this resolution does not have any direct political pull, where there's going to be some significant change when this is passed and signed by the mayor tomorrow, or this evening, but it does give us a unified position that we will continue to share with other stakeholders in this, in this issue. There are suggestions and courses of action that will be examined and followed after this, and one was to partner up with District two oh five, those discussions are going on right now, and we think we have potentially a willing partner there, at least willing to listen to us at this point, and although the ONCC, the formal structure of that body took a break during the summer, and there's no formal activities going on, other than the technical committee for the ONCC met last week on the fifteenth and approved that test, test number two report, and that's why we saw that finally last week, because that committee approved, reviewed and approved that report, there were some questions as to what happened with test two and the results, and I was happy to finally get the results of those, and hopefully after test three is completed, and test two was only completed about a month ago, so the turnaround is pretty good, I would expect to see the same expeditious report for test three produced, if not sooner. So, informally at this point, while the ONCC is not formally meeting until next month, we are looking at and busy arranging, trying to arrange meetings with the CDA, FAA officials, federal elected officials, to continue to work this issue, and I think there's been some statements that city's doing nothing, and that couldn't be farther from the truth, so I would want to voice that clearly, that the city is, even though the ONCC is not working and meeting right now, we are working behind the scenes to look at this issue, address it, make sure that test three, when it is completed, is examined in a fair and impartial manner, and that the residents of Elmhurst have their say and their input into what goes next.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you, excuse me, I want to first start out and thank the committee for making this a priority, as soon as the referral came across, putting it on the agenda, and looking at it every committee meeting until it got to this stage here tonight, for all of us as a council, hopefully united, to vote with, moving forward with this resolution. I think the resolution makes a statement, it makes a statement to ONCC, I think it makes a statement to the CDA, neighboring communities, as well as to our own residents. It says to our residents that we are in your corner, and we are going to continue to fight against the fly rotation, especially for this rotation to become permanent, as many residents spoke to tonight. So I want to applaud the committee for taking this and moving as quickly as all possible. Alderman Dunn, I just want to take a couple moments to thank you for giving a synopsis, if you will, on what actions are being taken, behind the scenes, if you would, I think the concern of the residents, from what I have heard, is that they are not aware of anything being taken behind the scenes, and therefore, they have vocalized their discontent, in all honesty, so I'm glad to hear we're reaching out to our federal officials, our local officials, arranging meetings, et cetera. I would like to make a request, on behalf of myself, and actually on behalf of some of the comments by the residents tonight, in regards to getting answers to the residents, we might not have the answers to the questions today, but I think if we don't move at a quick pace, I think every day we don't take action, and what I mean by action is not getting answers to these questions, is a day closer that the Fly Quiet rotation number three becomes a permanent rotation, and I don't think anybody on this dais, or anybody, any of the residents really wants that to happen, because impacting of one part of town impacts the whole, as one of the multiple residents spoke to tonight. So, the communication of what is happening, when these meetings are occurring, inviting residents to these meetings, I think is paramount. You know, I was not aware of the technical committee meeting, that anybody from Elmhurst was going to that, so I'm glad, Alderman Dunn, that you were able to go to that meeting and speak to that meeting, so I think making sure that our communication of what we're doing, past this resolution, is going to be critical, especially in regards to communicating to ONCC, communicating even to other communities, other communities that are against the fly rotation. You know, there's a lot of communities in the ONCC, including a lot of the school districts, I would love to see, you know, this is, I guess, a public plea, our school district to become part of the ONCC sooner compared to later. I believe, at least from what I know of it, the commitment is small, they don't meet every single day, they don't meet every single week, so I think the commitment in itself would be small, I think getting the answers to the residents sooner than later is paramount, but I also want to say, the inability for whoever operates the website, the complaint website, for the inability to keep that up, if they're really going to be utilizing that data and the survey data, this is critical, within the last week, I've encountered that website being down five times, that's me personally, not talking about any other residents and what they've encountered, but it's critical that that website has to stay up at all times, and when it does go down, that we have a direct contact to pick up a phone and talk to someone at whoever it is, if it's CDA or ONCC, to make sure that gets up accordingly. There is the option of the phone number, which is just as laborious, if some believe even more so, but I think it's really paramount to understand if the survey results are going to be used, and how they're going to be utilized by the ONCC, and if the ONCC is the decision-making bodying here, are the complaints going to be used, and if so, how? Because as residents have already stated tonight, they moved on the rotation three without even understanding what the data from rotation two is, so my understanding, when you do a pilot or a test in this case, you should evaluate the data before making decisions on what the next step should be. There's already been mention on rotation three becoming, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, they didn't mention that for flight rotation one, or the rotation test two, but they're mentioning this for three, the biggest impacting Elmhurst, which is fifty percent of the time, we get traffic over Elmhurst, which is critical, so I think that we as a community need to do as much as we can, and we as an elected body, this is a first step in many steps in the near future, to continue to push forward and make it known that we're not going to sit idle when it comes to this rotation test, as well as airplane traffic and noise and quality of life in general.
Okay, any other comments? Clerk Spencer.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero.
Ayes, one Y, never mind.
One fly.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries, resolution is approved. One quick note, I guess it'll be as a follow-up to this and/or other business, I know that staff has reached out to our school districts, eighty-eight, two oh five, and Salt Creek, but, and, also clarification, at one of our meetings, somebody brought up Park District joining, that's not part of ONCC, but school districts can, that having been said, we can only alert the school districts to this, they have to be the ones who join, so I know staff has various forms of reaching out to them, and they are aware of this, so, okay, any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Dunn, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you.